Everyone, welcome to the March 12, 2024, meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. Seeing none. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023, Extending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 38, Subsection 20, until March 31, 2025, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public is adequately accessed the proceeding as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to the meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel TV, which is now Xfinity Channel 8 and 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First item of the agenda is a roll call. Select Board Member De Castro.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
Select Board Member Shell.
Present.
And Select Board Member Metters is present. Just give you a little rundown of our tonight's agenda. Looks like we have approval of two sets of minutes. Then we will move into public announcements and agenda item requests, followed by a public hearing to consider the increase of shellfish license fees. Then we will have our February 2024 drinking water testing and pumping update. Then we will move on to public comments on our business agenda. And our business agenda tonight is relatively lengthy, and I'm just going to run down the 2024 Annual Town Meeting Article Review and Vote. Item 1, Regional Municipal Pool, a non-binding article, ballot question. Item 2, General Bylaw Amendment for Revised Chapter 100 Airport Approach Map. Item 3, General Bylaw Amendment, Chapter 100 Scrivener's Error. Item 4, Capital Project and Debt Exclusion and Borrowing, Transfer Station Phase 1, parentheses, Priority 2, close parentheses, plus ballot question. Item 5 is Chatham Community Preservation Act/Community Preservation Bylaw Amendment. Item 6 is Community Preservation Committee Administrative Budget. Item 7, Community Preservation Act Fund Appropriations. Item 8, Community Preservation Act Affordable Housing Trust. Item 9, Community Preservation Act Affordable Housing, Lower Cape Housing Institute. Item 10, Community Preservation Act Affordable Housing, Forward at the Rock, Phase 2. Item 11, Community Preservation Act Affordable Housing, Spring Rock. Item 12, Community Preservation Act Historic Coast Guard Boathouse. Item 13, Community Preservation Act Recreation, Monomoy Regional School District Press Box. And the last item of the agenda is Community Preservation Act Recreation, Chatham Little League Field. So with all that being said, I will start with approval of minutes for February 27, 2024. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Will hear a second?
Second.
Okay, corrections and omissions. Mike?
Yeah, I've got a couple here on the, this is February 27. My first one is on page 5. Item C, you may just want to include a note to the effect that, at the invitation of Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Sandborn jumped ahead with, I think, what was item F before we got to the Monomoy Regional School District Budget, et cetera. On page 7, this is, comes close to being a typo, but in the, right in the middle, where it says, "The district has presented the budget to the Harwich Select Board and will be presenting the proposed district budget to the Harwich Finance," I think that's the same budget, so maybe we could just call it the same thing, so that there's no confusion that we're talking about two different budgets. Page 8, at the end, at top paragraph, where it says, "And requested that the PEG Access Funds are granted to pay for that in order to complete the," I wasn't clear what the words are granted. We're talking here about authorization, I think. It just didn't read to me. I don't have a solution for you, but it didn't quite read for me. Page, that may be it. That's it for February 20. Oh, wait a minute, got one more, sorry. This is probably just my ignorance here, but at the bottom of page 10, it was stated that Chatham has two representatives to the CCRTHS. I assume that means Cape Cod Regional Technical High School, but what is, representatives in what context?
It would be the school committee, I'll amend that.
Okay, okay, thank you. Oh, and I'm sorry, I missed one other. At the top of page 10, at the end, it says, "Entered into a lease with the town of Harwich to build out two more programs for environmental studies," and then it just says, "And veterinary technician at that," is it the study of veterinary medicine, or, that could use a little editorial help as well. That's all I have, thank you.
Additional edits, comments, questions? Nope. All right, all those in favor of the amended, well, actually, motion, do you have a motion?
We have a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second with amended, of the amended minutes. Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Staying absent.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. So, approval of minutes for March 5, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, any edits, corrections? Dean?
I have several, Mr. Chairman. First is on page 4, at the bottom, the motion that I made, right in the middle of that, the third line from the bottom, made a motion at the board, I would strike the word of and add, "Acting as a select board and as water commissioners." And after the word commissioners, I would strike the entire rest of the sentence and substitute the following clause, "Accept and approve the conservation restriction as presented." Accept and approve the conservation restriction as presented. The next is on page 6. In the, one, two, three, fourth full paragraph, third line, where, toward the end, where it says, "Two part-time staff," I would insert after that, "plus a driver, comma, for a total of 2.5 FTEs, plus a driver, comma, for a total of 2.5 FTEs." And in the next paragraph, at the very end, strike the period, insert a comma, and add the following, and this was attributed to me, I guess, "And since the FY25 budget proposal, adds no new staff, comma, following several years of a number of staff additions, period." I'll read that again. "And since the FY25 budget proposal, adds no new staff, comma, following several years of a number of staff additions, period." The next page, page 7, second paragraph, final sentence, where it says, "The consensus of the board was not to make it contingent," I would insert the phrase after the word "of," the consensus of, and insert, "A majority of the board." The consensus of a majority of the board was not to make it contingent from the grant to the board. I was not part of that consensus. And then finally, on page 9, at the bottom, and maybe Mike caught this in his submittal earlier, I, there's something missing in that sentence.
I'm sorry, which one?
Page 9, at the bottom, if, second sentence, if the board.
Yes, I, I, well, I was going to raise it here in the meeting.
Yeah, I don't know what's missing, but some.
But where it says, "If the board PR," I, that, I didn't know what that meant.
Yeah, that's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, Dean, you and I can take up offline what the precise definition of consensus is, but.
Well, I, go ahead.
The paragraph on page 9, that says, "The bylaw encourages the town to protect woodlands and requires the site plan to show and contractors minimize the disturbance," that, that maybe is missing a word or something. I thought it needed a little help. I don't have a suggestion. Thank you, that's all I have.
Jeff?
I do have one, and it's about trees. Third paragraph, page 10, 1, 2, 3, about girdling. I'd like to change that section to, "It was suggested that fines be structured so that more egregious acts, such as the girdling of public, of town trees, incur greater fines."
Okay.
You got that, Cath? Thank you.
Any additional edits or amendments? Okay, all those in favor, Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. All right. Public announcements and agenda item request. Is there anyone on the board who has an agenda, a public announcement or agenda item request? I would say nope. All right, is there anyone in the audience in-house tonight who has a, is agenda item? Nope. Is there anyone online?
No.
All right, moving right along. Public hearing, we have a public hearing to consider the increase of shellfishing license fees. We have our Shellfish Constable Renee Gagné present, and I'll just take a moment for the town clerk, or the clerk, to read the public hearing notice, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 12, 2024, at 5:30 PM in the large meeting room at the Town Office Annex 261 George Ryder Road, and remotely through the link in the posted agenda to consider proposed increases to the annual shellfish permit fees. The public is welcome to attend the meeting in person or via a link in the meeting's posted agenda. All interested parties are certainly encouraged to participate. Signed, the Select Board.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, Renee Gagné, Shellfish Constable for the town, everybody's favorite, a permit increase. We haven't had a permit increase since 2016, and I do give the rationale in the agenda report, but for the public, there has been an incremental cost to our seed since our last fee increase in 2016, up to 58% for Cohogs. So we are recommending this to ensure that our revolving fund stays healthy in case we need to expend those monies for either rehabbing our current facility or into a proposed new facility. I also did not recommend the increase in commercial shellfish fees at this time because we have had a reduction in commercial fees, probably maybe 10 a year, mostly from attrition. And it was also a consideration that those folks are having other economic challenges with staying in the town, so I just wanted to clarify that. Also, that commercial permits give 75% of the sales to the revolving fund currently, and recreational fees only give 25%.
Since this is a public hearing, I'll open up for the public for any comments or questions. Is there anyone in the house that has a question? Is there anyone online who has a question or comment?
No.
Okay, I'll roll it over to the board. Does anyone from the, Jeff?
Thanks, Corey. Yeah, I just wanted to mention that for a resident family, the current rate is $35, and Renee is proposing, the town is proposing going to 45, which is a 28.6% increase. For a senior, going from 15 to $20, which is a 33% increase. And for a non-resident family, it's going from $100, the proposal is to go to $130, which is a 30% increase. So 28.6, 33, and 30% increases going forward. I was a little surprised, I just want to make sure that we're competitive with our surrounding towns for the non-residents, if you will. I don't have any issue with resident family increases or the senior increases, but I just, you know.
We do have a good deal. We're open seven days, we do.
We do.
But I was a little hesitant to increase it that substantially, you know, one time around, and from $100 to $130. That doesn't mean that we can't come back to you in a few years, but I was a little concerned that that might turn away some of our permit, our non-resident permit holders. But you are right, it's still a good deal, it's still lower than a lot of the other towns that have substantial shellfish resources, so.
Renee, most notably, Wellfleet.
Most notably.
Yeah, yeah, and then Barnstable and Born, or Born, I should say, to some degree, but.
That being said, Wellfleet has a year-round oyster harvest.
Yeah, so we can go there.
If you pay you 250 bucks.
Which is more expensive. Which is more expensive, why would we ever do that? Anyway, I'm, you know, I understand time marches on, it seems like we've increased every other permit in town, so I'm in favor of the changes. Thanks, Renee.
Dean?
Renee, do you happen to know the number of non-resident permit holders in Wellfleet versus what we have?
Actually, I don't. I'm sorry. I can get that information for you.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And we have a lot of non-resident permit holders in this town.
We have just under 1,000. We have more resident permit holders.
I mean, folks don't, it, it's, folks have to understand how vibrant this is in this town. It's unbelievable.
And it really has increased.
It really has, it's very popular, both summer residents, non-residents, residents, I mean, it, it's a blast, too. I mean, you know, it's fun, but it's really popular, and.
Very, very popular, increase, increased usage and decreased access to some limits.
Yeah, we have to be careful of that, as you all know. We do. We do. But it's very, well, you do a great job, and it's a very popular program, so I'm in favor of it.
All right, unless there's any questions, I think the motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Your second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter.
Motion to accept their proposed changes in the permits for shellfish.
All right, will hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye.
Great, thank you. Good night.
Yeah, Mr. De Castro does remind me that I should read the actual rules and regulations as proposed into the record, and I think he's right, as the clerk. So, shellfish rules and regulations, March 12, 2024, effective beginning 2024 of the 2025 season, the following permit fee increases, Section 205, classes of permits and fees, family resident, family, excuse me, family shellfish permit, $45. Non-resident family shellfish permit, $130. Senior citizen resident family permit, $20. Massachusetts resident veteran permit, $45. And Massachusetts resident senior veteran permit, $20. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next is our drinking water testing and pumping update for February 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Rob Failey, Director of Public Works. So, this is February drinking water and pumping update, kind of similar to last week's presentation in January. Well 5 is currently shut down for the season. For the, for the permanent treatment facility that we have out to bid for Wells 5 and 8, bids for the prefiled subbidders will be open this Thursday, and general contractors will be open the following Thursday, on the 21st. So we're hoping for a robust turnout, competitive prices. For Wells 10 and 11, thank you for the conservation easement, we are getting that processed and approved through MassDEP. And we have been sampling the waters from Wells 10 and 11. Again, they are non-detect for PFOS, but we are testing all the other organic contaminant possibilities, so we haven't had results of that yet. Month of February, wells have been running four to six hours a day. The water storage tanks did not hit the low level. As you recall, last week, we talked about PFOS hit at raw water at Well 6, and so the, we went to, submitted those test results to MassDEP. They indicated that because it is showing as non-detect at the treated water, we will only need to test that annually. And, any questions on that?
Questions for the board?
I just appreciated the aquifer graph. Are you going to show that at all?
Yeah, we'll get to that, sorry.
Thanks.
So, continuing on, here's just the table we usually see for comparing February 23 and February 24. You'll notice that almost every day, we've been under pumping from last year, totals little over 3 million gallons less than last February, and about a 17% reduction. This is just a graph that shows kind of the same information. February 2024 is the pink, so you can see every day, except for, you know, maybe five days or so was below last year. And then there's just a bar graph that indicates the same information. This is, I guess, a favored report that shows the daily pumping for every well for the month of February. Again, Well 4 is pretty much offline for the winter, as well as Well 5. Well 8 remains offline, and Wells 10 and 11, we are, we're not actively introducing that to the water system yet. You can really see here where we're really relying on the South Chatham wells during the wintertime. We've been doing a lot of maintenance on Wells 6, 7, and 9 at the Morton Treatment Plant, so they've been off periodically, but they're usually very strong contributors as well. And that's just a graph that kind of indicates the same thing in a bar graph.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, do these pumpage numbers reflect usage, more or less?
Yeah, because they're pretty much filling the stand pipes, the tanks.
So, my question, I don't remember the exact number, but as I recall, January was down 4% or 5% versus the prior January. We've got whatever it is, 17% here. It is, I mean, is there any reason other than just serendipity that we have now two months of considerably lower, apparently, usage and certainly pumpage?
Yeah, maybe the, it could be the weather, more people have left Chatham for the winter this year versus last year. Yeah, I just, I don't know why usage is down, but it's a, it's a good sign.
It beats the alternative, there's no doubt about that. Thank you.
And then this is just a kind of a monthly chart that we'll be adding to, just to show which well is contributing every month, and we'll, and we'll update this throughout the year, so you really have a good annual total. And then we get to the USGS graphs. So, Chatham is the top one. That's a little bit more, I guess you want to say, it's more of a local representation, it's a little bit more volatile, it fluctuates a little bit easier. The Brewster chart is kind of like the bellwether for all of, all the Cape, and it really is a good indicator of watersheds. But even if we look at Chatham, you can see it's starting to tail off a little bit when we get to the current state. So, we are somewhere between, you know, if we look at averages, we are somewhere between 2021 levels and 2022 levels. I, you know, we still have a bunch of recharge this spring to go through, so I'm hoping for the best, but it doesn't bode well at this point in time. We look at Brewster, that's a little bit better of an indicator, and we're still starting to show a flattening of the recharge curve, where it should be a more steeper gradient, and we want to see that peak as high as we possibly can before we start drawing down for the summer and before we get to the drier months. So we really have to keep a close eye on this. You know, I think next month will, will tell us, because we'll be into April at that point. So we're still recharging probably well into May. We'll see where that, where that chart really, where the peak is on that, on that curve.
Jeff?
Rob, my glass is half-full. April showers bring hierographers, not just May flowers. So, what struck me about the graph is that the correlation between the two was unreal. The peaks are almost exactly lined up, and the valleys are almost completely lined up. Were the Monomoy lens, both the Brewster data is from the Monomoy lens as is CHAM.
Yes, they both are.
So, it, it's not illogical, illogical to have the peaks and valleys kind of resonate.
No, you would expect that.
Yeah, so, and then the key piece of data, I think, is the, is the 10 for us and the 18 for them. I mean, yes, yeah, okay, gotcha. Thank you, I, this is a great chart, too, it's great, thank you.
Dean?
Rob, where is the Chatham Test Point located? Do you know?
Yeah, offhand, I do not know.
We could get that next time.
Yep.
Thanks, thank you.
I know there's an observation well off of Meeting House Road, but I'm not sure if that's this one. I know there's a USGS observation well there.
So, at some point, I'm going to prevail on you to do a tour, just to look at the well sites, look, I just, I think you offered to do 10 and 11, I just haven't had a chance to do it, but maybe after tax season, that'd be great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
And the final chart is the five-year average. We are below average for the month of February, when you look back at the five years, but you'll also notice that our pumpage hours are higher, and that's typically just because we have some of those wells that are down for maintenance and seasonal shut-off, so we expect that. But it's, it's a good sign, we're not using as much water as we have, we're going back about five years when we see like a matching amount of water that we pump for the month of February.
All right, questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the audience? Questions or comments from the online audience?
None.
None, all right, well, thank you very much, and we look forward to next month's report.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now is the opportunity for a public comment on our business agenda. If anyone in the, start off with the live audience, if anyone has any comments on our tonight's agenda, now is the time to come up to the podium.
Sure. Good evening, Dan Young, Friends of Trees. Preliminary, talking about the airport, preliminary indications are 50-plus acres of trees within the airport property will be cleared. What is the impact of cutting 50 acres of trees? To answer this question, a comparison can be made between the 62 trees recently cut along George Ryder Road and a 50-acre plot. Extrapolating the numbers would conservatively indicate a total number of trees within the 50 acres to be in excess of 10,000. That's a conservative number. It is hoped that due consideration is given by both the Select Board and Chatham residents when deliberating this topic. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. For the record, Michael Thompson. I'd like to comment on item 2 of the Revised Bylaw, Chapter 100, the Airport Approach Map. The existing approach surfaces shown in the 1958 map are not outdated as claimed. They continue to meet the required FAA standard for type 2 visual approaches and define the airspace as they always have done, which is un. the airspace as they always have done, which is unaltered. The airport layout plan does not contain safety improvements as claimed unless you regard house removal at the top of Great Hill as an improvement. This article is trying to change the geometry of the approach surfaces to a type-four approach surface. This change would primarily be for the benefit of the turboprops since it would allow straight-in from 10 miles away, which is dangerous without a control tower. And I've personally seen a couple of incidents of that. This type-four approach would also allow instrument landings in poor visibility, which would lead to much larger RPZs. As you probably know already, RPZs are the danger zones at the ends of the runway where aircraft might under or overshoot the runway. The current RPZs, just with visual approaches, already include 20 homes, stores, busy roads, et cetera. These larger RPZs that would come from going with the type-four approach would include over 100 homes and hundreds of people, especially in summer. This change would effectively expand the airport footprint tenfold with a disastrous effect on West Chatham. RPZs do not enhance the protection of people and property on the ground, as claimed in this draft bylaw. They are just the danger zones, which the FAA is adamant should be empty of people and property. Historically, the town has broken its many promises not to zone development in the RPZs. And this bylaw proposal would continue the blatant and irresponsible disregard of those promises. Since expanding the RPZs for instrument landings in poor visibility and putting more people at risk is clearly unconscionable, this proposal for a type-four approach, which would lead to this, makes no sense. This change cannot be legitimized by modifying the bylaw. Visual landings should continue to be the rule. This draft article is deliberately misleading, makes nonsense statements, and should not be included on the warrant. I just want to make the point that the same duplicity is evident with CONSCOM, where there's an application from the airport. And the airport is disingenuously requesting tree removal under the existing type-two visual approach surface, but then submitting drawings showing much more extensive tree removal to meet a type-four instrument approach surface. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience tonight? Is there anyone online?
No.
No? All right. So we're going to move into our regular business.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Looks like a Ned Bartlett.
Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you. Can you hear me? Are you able to hear me in the?
We are able to hear you, yes.
Thank you for confirming. Thank you for confirming the technology connection. And thank you for the opportunity. This is a question regarding the airport bylaw. I, I'm trying to understand the, the import of this from the perspective of the landowners that will, are, and perhaps will be subject to this proposal. Is it only a height and height of structure and tree, height of tree condition? Or does this in some way control the ability to add on to a person's home, expand a person's home? Any clarity or, or information that could be shared by the board would be appreciated.
Okay, we'll take note of that when we get into the agenda item later tonight.
Separate question, if I could?
Please.
Is there any information about the number of additional properties that are added to the Area A plan that I believe was dated 1958? I believe is the current plan that is out there? So is there any information that will be presented on how many more homes are added? Or how many more properties are added?
We have a presentation a little bit further on. I do not have an answer for that at the moment, to be honest with you.
Or will you be taking additional questions at the time of the presentation?
We will not. Public, the beginning of our business agenda, we allow for public comment on our business agenda. So this is the time to ask questions and we will certainly take note of those.
Obviously, those are the only ones I'm aware of, but not being familiar with your full presentation. Is there a future opportunity to present questions, if not tonight?
It will go before the town meeting potentially.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there another handle?
There's another one. A David.
David, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right. David Bixby, Chatham. Hard to get it all. It's too complicated a subject to talk about in three minutes, but I'll try to race through some general comments here. First of all, I read the justification for the proposal. I, I feel the justification for the expanded approach is vague and certainly not transparent to the public. The Airport Commission has repeatedly stated that there will be no expansion of the airport, and yet here we are, expanding the footprint, the impact of the airport on private properties. It may not expand the actual boundary of the airport, but it's certainly an expansion of the footprint of the airport. And so I feel the commission has basically lied to the public on this subject. I find it concerning that we have a proposal to expand the airport approach. There's a map that shows a new boundary, but there's no map showing the original boundary. So property owners have no idea, are they in the expanded zone or are they not? I just feel like this is, this has been kind of dumped on the, I wonder how many people that are affected by this are even aware of it. I think that you're kind of rushing this thing through, and I don't think there's been enough outreach, outreach to the people involved. The amendment, the amendment is expanding the, under the Chapter 90 rules, law, when you expand the, the airport approach zone, you're gonna, you're affect, the law requires you to grandfather in all the existing non-conforming trees and structures. So the town isn't going to be, or the Airport Commission isn't going to be able to go in and cut those tree or remove those trees. The only way they can do it is through easements. I, I hope you can remember back to 2019, the uproar when the commission tried to force easements on, I don't know, 49 or 51 property owners. The people were not happy and they, they packed the meeting rooms to oppose that move. Seems to me that you're doing this all over again. I thought we'd kind of put that to rest back in 2019. Eminent, the proposal says there's going to be no fiscal impact now or in fiscal year 25. But if you're going to be pursuing easements, you're going to be taking easements through eminent domain proceedings. There are huge financial, potentially huge financial impacts. I feel that saying that there's no fiscal impact of this is, is pretty disingenuous. Finally, on the, on the other warrant article, to correct the Scrivener's error, I commend Mr. Shell for addressing the problem with 100B. But nobody's addressing the problem with 100C. 100C is contrary to state law and it's even contrary to your own, to, to the bylaw itself. I, I don't, I can't read it. There's not enough time here, but you really need to take a look at 100C as well as 100B. So I really, I don't know what the deadline for a warrant is, but I think you need to take a step back and take a more close look at some of these issues before you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bixby. Is there any other hands online? I don't see.
No.
All right. So we will move into our regular business agenda. Item one, regional municipal pool, a non-binding article and a ballot question. We have Roz Coleman, I believe, presenting. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. From the beginning, when I saw the Chronicles' challenge to pool our resources, I thought that sounded like a really good idea. But it turns out that it's more complicated. And I still want the non-binding approach. I'm not trying to change that. However, when I mentioned that there were companies, I really thought that there would be non-companies that are nonprofit that could work with the schools. But it turns out that not, that a for-profit or a nonprofit can't work with the schools. Because I would, I, it was my idea that we would get, we'd find out about how much land we actually have. Nobody knows. We don't have, we've never done a feasibility study about the Montomoi Regional property that is overseen by Montomoi Regional Properties. So I thought, what a good idea. We could find out how much land we have and do we have any way of using it more appropriately? Not that we are using it inappropriately, but if we used it a little differently, would we have room for a pool? I thought, isn't that a good idea to ask that question? However, the more I looked into it, the more I found out that most for-profit companies cannot work in any public realm. Like if, all they can do is do their non, their for-profit stuff. And they have to find new ground. And so the non, the companies that are out there couldn't possibly use any space that the town, any town owns. They have to find a brand-new space for, let's say, YMCA in our general area. I, I just don't know where we're going to find that brand-new space that doesn't have any public ties. So I finally found a, an example of the school building authority. And the word authority, if you have ever worked in public schools, when they were coming to check us out, it wasn't just the building, it was everything we did in the building. They were the authorities. And every 10 years or so, Wellesley High School had to check out whether or not it was meeting all of its goals and if all of their programs were established correctly in all of the spaces that we owned. And we all had to, we all had to really be on our best behavior. We had to figure out, so the word authority really is an authority. Now, it turns out that East Long Meadow was a very old school. It was an old building, and it had a pool in the building. But it was a strange building. And the school, Massachusetts School Building Authority said it was really in bad shape. And there was a question about whether or not there, they would still be able to be a school if they didn't shape up the way the building authority wanted them to. So it turned out that they did come in, the building, the Massachusetts School Building Authority came in and they did all these things that are really, I think, great things. They, they conducted a, they had visioning exercises where everybody in all, in that East Long Meadow community had to gather to have a vision of what should our school be because we've probably got to build a new school because the building authority doesn't like anything that we're doing in this building. So it turned out by coincidence that there was a community pool that was going in, in the area, very close to the East Long Meadow High School or the public school. It was a big building. So when the town looked at how much it was going to cost to completely renovate the big East Long Meadow building that had to be renovated, and it had a pool, and they were going to keep the pool. But it was so much more, apparently, when the town had a choice, they, they voted to do the community pool. And so all of the information says that the East Long Meadow Building Authority has no responsibility for that pool. We just, we just don't look at us because we don't approve that. But it turned out that they, the town had to build a new high school, but they didn't put a swimming pool in it, apparently, because they had voted for the community pool nearby. So there is a really big difference between schools working together. And there's no way that the challenge that the Chronicle gave us, we can even do that unless we happen to involve the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And we could because they're talking about all the schools. They're talking about Chatham, the regional, Montomoi Regional. They're talking about even bringing Orleans in. And what if we had Brewster in, too? Wouldn't that be interesting? So it's, I just thought that it was important to add that if schools are going to get together and vision anything, they have to call in the Massachusetts School Building Authority. They don't have to vote for it after they talk about it. But I think that in this situation, the Massachusetts School Building Authority would, we're talking about a brand-new high school that we have, that we built, Montomoi Regional High School. We, we have a lovely middle school, which is probably in good shape. The only thing that they might do is say, oh, my God, your elementary school has to be completely redone. But I'm not even sure they'd do that. But anyway, all of these schools are wanting the same thing. They all want a better opportunity for a public, for a regional swimming pool. And unless, I just wanted to point out that unless Massachusetts School Building Authority is called in, we can't vision what we might do. So.
So, well, actually, Dean, I was, I was going to say, so basically, you're kind of, your initial proposal, basically, and I hate to use the term, to test the water with the voters, to see what kind of philosophical support with a, a, a community pool in. Obviously, there's going to be, if, if we were to go down this review, just, you know, just of discussion and debate, there's going to be the funding, the locations, the, you know, there's, there's multiple, multiple lever, levels of that discussion that would have to happen to get us to any end project. But right now, you're just asking for some philosophical support in pursuing that type of discussion. So, Dean?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Roz. And when you, you brought this before the board, I think, back in, last year in October. And then you and I had a conversation. You brought it up with me. So I just want to kind of focus on what we're trying to do for town meeting. So you proposed a question that reads as follows. Shall the town of Chatham explore participating in a regional swimming pool facility? That's the question. So it's just so we all understand, that's a question you would like to put in a non-binding form before town meeting.
Yes.
Are you talking about also putting it on the ballot in the town election?
No.
So it would just be a very simple.
It's just basically getting the feedback of, does this seem like something, a regional pool? Would we like a regional pool? But I, I just felt that, that when I put the word companies in, it led to the idea that there were a lot of companies out there. There are.
So that, so this would be put before town meeting in the form of a warrant article, if the board is so inclined. And it would not, it would not go to the town election. If the, if the vote were in the affirmative, then it would come back to the Select Board as all town meeting votes do, and we would determine what the follow-up would be. And that would be the sort of, that would be the venue or the opportunity to go into the kind of discussions that you're talking. that you're talking about with the town of Harwich or with other towns. I know you've had some conversations with Harwich. You've had conversation, communication with the superintendent who favors, favors a pool because he can't have a swimming, swim team right now without it. So all that follow-up would occur after town meeting. So I just wanted to get that out there. So I certainly would, would support placing a non-binding ballot, sorry, a non-binding question to annual, annual town meeting in the form of a warrant article, which I would ask the town manager to prepare for us. We could see it next week. I don't know if we take a vote tonight or not. But that would, it would simply say, shall the town of Chatham explore participating in a regional swimming pool facility? The explanation that would go on the warrant could include some of the material or ideas that Roz has articulated this evening and previously and in her material. If that's, does that sound a reasonable approach, town manager?
Yes, it's a reasonable approach. I, it's just a matter of how much detail to put into the explanation. It's, it's your information. So I don't know if we should acknowledge that Ms. Coleman had provided it to us. That's, those are the nuances that I just need to work through.
Yeah. Do you want to vote tonight?
Sure. I, I don't think it's going to look much different than what, how you just.
So I, I move that the, the select board place on the warrant an article that asks for a non-binding question. Quote, "Shall the town of Chatham explore participating in a regional swimming, swimming pool facility?" End of quote.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mike.
First of all, thank you. As long as I've been at all any way involved or listening or paying attention to town politics, a pool has always been something that people put right at the top of their wish list. And I think this is responsive to it. I think Dean's suggestion will, if we get it on the warrant, I think it will demonstrate to us what the, as I recall, the, it was in excess of 200 signatures on a petition some years ago caused the select board to spend $50,000 on a feasibility study of the former Health Club. There's a lot of sentiment out there for that. In, in answer to your inquiry, Jill, I, I, I mean, we can give Roz credit or pick up some of the things that she's suggesting. But I think, my own sense is, what you want is a general expression of sentiment in favor of looking to see what we can do to create a regional. Well, and, and of course, if we, we, that, that would be part of the feasibility study or the feasibility inquiry. But if we can do it as municipalities without the schools, and that's an easier, cheaper, faster, whatever way to do it, I take it you wouldn't argue with that. It would be wonderful if we could do it for, for the schools and everybody. But I think the general sense is, let's get this out there, get people to express their wishes, and then take it from there. The one thing I, I would, if I may, forgive me. Do we want to say, give some sense of the municipalities to whom we might look as possible partners in this exercise? Or not?
Well.
Well, I, if I may, I was actually looking at my colleagues here to start with, anyway.
I, I would suggest you could put that in the explanation in the warrant. I mean, certainly Harwich is an obvious candidate. Brewster, does Nassau have a pool?
They use Willie's Gym and, yeah. Health Club, yep, yep.
So it would be some of the surrounding towns. I don't know about Orleans. Those would be the ideas.
That's fine.
Yeah, Corey, thank you, Roz. Thank you very much for pursuing this and being diligent and perseverant. I'm certainly in favor of the non-binding article on the warrant. I'll certainly, I'll vote in favor of it. I do think the explanation in the warrant can say, oh, this is, we're gauging the interest of the, of the town of Chatham and our pursuit, our further pursuit of the development of a, of a municipal pool, a regional municipal pool for our, you know, as many surrounding towns that are interested. I think we can craft a pretty general explanation. Having had lots of experience with the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, they are an authority, but they, they, they have a warm ear at time. And they were very generous to the towns of Harwich and Chatham. When Harwich is under sanction for a high school that was literally falling down, they were very, very generous to the, to the creation of the Montomoy Regional School District. So we may, we may find a warm ear there. We may not, but we may find a warm. The, the, the state is drying up monies a little bit. So the, the, the budget revenues, the tax revenues have slowed down compared to what their projections were. So they're, they're not, you know, they, the coffers aren't overflowing uptown. But that doesn't mean a good project, well-designed and well-thought-out wouldn't meet with some approval. So I, I, my glass is half-full. Let's test the waters. Thanks.
I'll keep it simple. I'm very supportive.
And pool our resources? That too.
Not going to comment on that. No, I'm very supportive of a non-binding article for town meeting. I think it's worth a discussion. Obviously, a lot more in-depth will happen after that fact. But we'll worry about that at that stage. So we have a motion on the table. We have a second. Unless there's further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye.
Do we want to?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do we want to take a vote to recommend? Or do we want to see the actual production?
I don't think it's going to be much different than what's kind of been proposed.
I move we recommend.
Second.
Okay, further discussion. All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye.
Thanks, Roz.
Thank you, Roz.
Item number two, General Bylaw Amendment, Revised Chapter 100 Airport Approach Map.
Before we, Huntley Harrison, Chairman, Airport Commission. Before we get started, I would like to ask you if we could flip-flop two and three.
You want to do the Chapter 100 Scrivener's error first?
Yes, do that first.
That's fine.
In an effort for expediency.
That's fine.
Okay, so if we could do that first. Terry Whalen will present that, and I'll be back.
Good evening. My name is Terry Whalen, Principal Projects and Operations Administrator, and I'm also the Airport Commission Staff Liaison. And as the chair just requested, we'll do the Scrivener's article first. And if it's okay, I'm, I'm thinking we'll run through the presentation and then take questions and then move on to the next article.
Fine.
And seeking the actions at the end of each, in, in two pieces, if that's.
Two pieces would be preferred, yes.
Okay, great. So just confirming that that's okay. And again, so I'm going to, I'm going to go through and present, sorry, my mouse working here. So again, with the new order, we're going to present the proposed general changes to Chapter 100 Airport Approach Protection. The first article proposes to correct a Scrivener's error. The second article proposes to revise the reference to the Airport Approach Zones map by replacing the original 1958 map with one reflecting current conditions. So for the Scrivener's error, error, excuse me, error correction article, the mechanics of it are pretty straightforward here, as indicated in, on this slide and in your staff report. So basically, the mechanics of the article include reinstating, reinstating the word "not" as indicated in this slide. So Chapter 100 was originally approved and adopted in 1958. It, it then contained, it was then contained in Section 56 Airport Approach Protection Bylaw. So the, the, the bylaw was then modified on May, at the May 12th, 1997, special town meeting by Article 11, where there was a format change to the general bylaws resulting in Section 56 Airport Approach changing to Chapter 13 Airport Approach Protection. And then in 19, excuse me, in that, in, in 1997, that article was only intended to effectuate an administrative change to the overall format of the general bylaws. So however, the supporting documentation for this warrant article, which contained the text of the newly titled Chapter 13 Airport Approach Protection, inadvertently failed to include the word "not" from the original bylaw. So this Scrivener's error also persisted in a subsequent administrative format change that went before town meeting in 2006, where Chapter 13 Airport Approach Protection was changed to the current Chapter 100 Airport Approach Protection. So a positive vote on this article basically restores the word "not" as originally approved in the 1958 bylaw and reestablishes consistency with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 90, Section 40B, as intended in the original approval. So the requested action this evening is, as again stated in the staff report, seeking article placement from the select board on the ATM 2024 warrant and the request, select board approval. And I don't know if, based on some of the questions, we do have a, Town Council is on the line. Some of the questions regarding this article might relate to some of the grandfathering questions that were posed by various speaker, previous speakers.
Thank you. Mike.
Well, no, I, I, Terry, I don't know. Maybe I'm missing one of them. I think the grandfathering issues relate to the, to the map question. I, I don't think they relate to this. The only question I'm aware of is one that Mr. Bixby raised, which is that we shouldn't do this because we're not fixing what he thinks is an error in 40C. We, we've looked at that and, and I think, and, and, you know, we can do this whether he's right, wrong, or indifferent. So I, I, I think that's the only question I'm aware of that relates to this one.
Dean.
Yeah, just, please refresh my recollection, Mike, if you can remember. The, the vote that we took about a year ago, was that an amendment to C? 100C?
No, the, you're talking about the thing that went to.
Town meeting.
To town meeting, was approved.
Yeah.
No, that related to the creation of a fund that could be used by the Airport Commission or anybody else, but to pay for cutting trees on properties that, that need to have.
I thought, in order to, associated with that, I thought we made some.
There was another, there, there was a second one that gave the Airport Commission authority to use that fund.
Thank you. So this, this proposed change in B simply restores the status of non-conforming use, which was, which was eliminated by the.
Right, so it reestablishes the word "not," which was inadvertently, you know, from the original approval. And again, through two subsequent format changes. The first, it was dropped inadvertently, and the error was compounded or continued.
And, and the absence of the word "not," I remember was, was uncovered when we were doing that work last, last year, as I recall.
Well, I, I, in, in all fairness, I think Mr. Bixby has to get credit for the uncovering it. He did bring this, at least he brought it to my attention.
Yeah, whenever. I, I think it was fairly, you know, I appreciate that. But I think that's, that's when I remember it coming up. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Jeff.
Move to approve the change.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Place.
Place.
Place the.
And a second.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye.
Move to recommend.
Here, a second.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Okay, now for the Airport Approach Map.
Thank you. So again, we'll transition now to the Revised Airport Approach Zones Map article. So Chapter 100 of Chatham's General Bylaws entitled Airport Approach Protection was first enacted in 1958. It basically determines what sort of hazards must be prevented from obstructing airspace in which arriving and departing aircraft approach and leave the airport. So Chapter 100 also, oops, sorry. So for the context on the proposed map reference change, here's the 1958 map. So this map indicates the airport approach zones being located 200 feet outward from each runway end with a base dimension of 250 feet perpendicular to the runway ends with a one, excuse me, a 10,000-foot length coinciding with the center line of the runway extended to a 2,250-foot outer width. So again, those dimensions were indicated on this, on the, the 1958 map. So since, since 1958 and up to the present, there have been changes to the airspace used by aircraft arriving and departing the airport, including regulatory input from the Federal Aviation Administration and through its, through its publication of advisory circulars, safety improvements in the FAA-approved airport layout plan, further efforts to improve safety for pilots, aircraft passengers, and everyone on the ground in the airport's vicinity. And basically, these changes in arriving and departing airspace don't longer correctly reflect the airport, airport, excuse me, the approach zone areas shown on the 1958 map, which has not been revised in 65 years. So this, this proposed article is, is needed as the 1958 map needs to be replaced with a map correctly reflecting the reality of today's aircraft arrivals and departures. The new map supports the continued commitment to public safety and protection of the lives and property of aircraft pilots and passengers and everyone on the ground in the airport's vicinity, as it will more accurately prevent the creation and maintenance of airport hazards. So again, here's, we're getting to the actual article. On its appearance here, the actual mechanics of it are, are pretty straightforward. Basically, the article involves striking the February 1958 reference and replacing it with a March 2024 reference. So for the proposed map reference change, here is the 2024 map. So the revised map indicates the airport approach zones being located 200 feet outward from each runway end with a base dimension of 400 feet perpendicular to the runway ends with a 10,000-foot length coinciding with the center line of the runway extended to a 3, 3,400-foot outer width. So the key, the key map change features included, include reconciling the airport approach zone areas with current conditions, airport layout plan features, and FAA advisory circulars. The revised approach zone area shapes maintain the existing 20-to-1 slope of the 1958 map. So, and then the, the airport protection zones are distinct and separate from runway protection zones. So for contrast purposes, So, for contrast purposes, the following graphic was created indicating the 1958 and 2024 airport approach zones. So, the red shapes indicate that the 1958 airport approach zone locations overlaying on the proposed 2024 zones. The 2024 airport approach zones reflect current runway end locations and dimensions consistent with the FAA advisory circular 150/5300-13B. And, and the, the, those dimensions are included in Table 3.3. And, and this advisory circular was just revised by the FAA in March of 2022. So, regarding some of the questions, and hopefully some of these are addressing some of the questions that were raised previously, this, this map, the yellow highlighted areas illustrate the difference between the original 1958 and the proposed 2024 general bylaw airport approach zones. So, this profile view illustrates the first 5,000 linear feet from the 20-to-1 Type 4 airport approach surface for each runway end. This slope remains unchanged from the 1958 map. The gray areas represent the approximate topography along that range. The yellow highlighting here illustrates each runway end's elevation. So, this graphic was created to illustrate the elevation contours associated with the 20, 20-to-1 slope surface for both runway ends. The red, red shaded areas on the graphic indicate the identified approach surface So, for the runway six end at about Rumsen Way with an approximate ground elevation of 40 feet, the bottom of the approach surface in the air is approximately 158 feet above mean sea level, providing well over 100 feet of vertical clearance where it is unlikely that trees will need to be trimmed or removed in the future to the left of the yellow line in this graphic. So, for the runway 2-4 end, at about 1,400 linear feet from the runway end with an approximate ground elevation of 64 feet, the bottom of the 20-to-1 approach surface in the air is approximately 187 feet above mean sea level, providing well over 100 feet of vertical clearance where it is unlikely that trees will need to be trimmed or removed in the future to the right of the yellow line in this graphic. For the highest elevations on Great Hill at about 128 feet, the bottom of the 20-to-1 approach surface is approximately 200 feet above MSL or about 120 feet of vertical clearance above the ground. So, a positive vote on this article reconciles the approach zones with current conditions, the airport layout plan features, and FAA advisory circulars. It also reestablishes consistency with current conditions and presents the ability to better protect public safety. So, I'm just gonna, I don't know if it's best to answer a couple of the questions, but a couple of points are raised. So, they, you know, one of the points was about, it, it's really about the intrusion into the, the surface was one of the questions. So, it's really the height that, that's the issue of the bylaw. And the chair might have a few responses to a couple of the other comments. But, you know, essentially, there were comments made about the RPZs changing or being impacted this. It's not related to that. And in fact, that is not happening as part of what's happening with this article or anything else that's going on right now with the migration to the Type 4 surface.
I know we mentioned earlier also before Huntley gets up, town council is online. We'll ask Pat at, weigh in a little bit. Pat, do you mind weighing in?
Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the board. I've, I've been consulting with the Airport Commission staff and other consultants on this particular issue, and I, I don't see any legal issues or problems with the proposed amendment. Much like the amendment that was approved recently by town meeting, which was also approved by the Office of the Attorney General as consistent with provisions of Chapter 90, I believe that this particular proposed map amendment and the, the Scrivnis Error Amendment will, in fact, comport 100% with the provisions of Chapter 90. It does nothing, in my view, to impose any undue burden on, on any property owners. As is always the case when there's an airport in a community, there are, there are benefits and burdens that, that come with that type of a public operation. And the, the burdens are precisely the types of restrictions that are being discussed here. In order to maintain public safety and safe navigation at, at the airport, we have to maintain certain clearances to allow for safe operation of the runways. This bylaw does exactly that. And the provisions of Mass. General Law Chapter 90, particularly Sections 48 through I, are geared to, first of all, authorize municipalities to adopt regulations to maintain those safety requirements. And significantly, they also incorporate provisions that protect property owners should they sustain any damages in their property as a result of these regulations. The Airport Commission would certainly be reaching out to and working with property owners in the event that there are trees or other structures that have to be trimmed or lowered. And we have that right both pursuant to general law and pursuant to the bylaw. And in the event that the, there isn't a, a mutual desire or willingness to accommodate those issues, the town has the extreme right, which it always exercises cautiously to exercise eminent domain and, and take properties or trees on properties that, that impact air safety. We do not anticipate there to be any significant, if any, eminent domain activity in this regard. I know the Commission is committed to reaching out and working cooperatively with property owners to try to implement these regulations. So, in, in sum, it's my view that the, the regulation as proposed by virtue of the amended map is consistent with the provisions of Chapter 90, and that should town meeting vote to approve that amendment, that it would be approved by the China General Office.
Thank you, Pat. Dean?
I didn't know if you wanted to go, you're liaison, so maybe you might want to go first.
Yeah, I, I just, I have a couple of questions, but one I think will help, just to ask, to clarify in response to the questions that Mr. Bartlett asked. His question was how many properties are added? I think the best way to answer that, if, if, and if it's not, then tell me, but the best way to answer that is, is to ask you whether this expansion of the approach zone, as has been exhibited, adds any homeowner, homeowners to the list of people to whom the Airport Commission reached out initially back in, I think it was September of 2022. And so, I'm, I'm really asking, are there any new properties in the sense of new owners added to the list of people who are subject to this part of Chapter 100 as distinct from what was listed in September of 2022?
So, I think, I think I have to answer this in two parts. The first part, basically, the outreach is consistent with everybody being within the 2024 surface.
So, forgive me for interrupting. So, what you're telling me is that you reached out to people consistent with the 2024 map, not the old map?
Right. So, this goes back to the, to both the AMPU, the EA process, that has been the target. But the, but the second part, that I guess the technical nuance is that, you know, between the, from the bylaw perspective, there are properties added in the, shown by those slippers, and we can generate that list.
But not new owners? I mean, it, it's one thing to say there, some of the properties to which you reached out were not or are not subject, or parts of the properties are not subject to the bylaw unless it's amended. But what I'm really focused on is, did, did you reach out to everyone according to the, this proposed larger map when you reached out in 2022 or 2020s?
Yes. And again, we, we had that confirmed by-
Okay, that's, okay.
-GAL associates as well.
Thank you.
Dean?
Thank, thank you. Mike touched on something I wanted to ask, but I listened to all the comments at the beginning, and I wanted to ask about some of those because if we're gonna go to town meeting with, with this, it's gonna be very important for the town meeting voters to understand what's going on, what they're being asked to do. Because I don't fully understand it myself at this point. And, and let me touch on some of the things I heard earlier, and some of them may be not relevant to this, but they were brought up. So, Dr. Thompson, for example, talked about a Type 2 versus a Type 4. Can you just explain what that is?
Yeah. Every airport has approach surfaces. Our airport happens to have two. Approach surfaces are designed for the design aircraft, the type of operation, whether it's instrument, visual, or commercial, air carrier. They're all, they all have different surfaces and different approach zones depending on what it is. Chatham has two. We have a visual approach surface, which is a surface 2, and we also have an instrument approach surface, which is approach surface 4. And those, the approach surface 4 are for the current GPS approach that we have now and the circling approach that we have now, which are non-precision instrument approaches. So, we have two surfaces, one for visual, one for instrument. The mistake, not mistake, but the, the, I guess, the, the information that's been put out there is that we do not have a surface 4 and that we're doing all of this to create a surface 4 so that we can accommodate the PC-12s and other turbine-type aircraft. Nothing changes. Nothing changes. The visual limitations that we have now will be the same. The distances will be the same that we have now for the circling approach, which will go away if we get the, what they call an LPV approach with vertical guidance. It will not bring in any planes bigger than we have now. The, the airport cannot accommodate, because of its length, airplanes that are any bigger. So, things in that sense will not change. In fact, probably with electric aircraft, things might get smaller. I don't know. But right now, the approaches we have are level, are surface Type 2 and surface Type 4. And the, and the residents that we contacted, all the diagrams we showed them were for the expanded view that you had on the, on the diagram.
Okay. So, Terry, can you put the slide back up that showed the horizontal profile? It had like a yellow-
You, you mean the vertical profile?
That's it, the vertical profile. So, can you explain what's going on there, particularly with reference to the 20, 20s-to-1? What does that mean? What's, what does 20-to-1 mean, and how, how is that demonstrated on this slide?
So, so what this, this slide is showing, and again, this is essentially the same slope that we have now. So, for, the, the yellow line here shows the, if you look up here, the elevation of the, of the runway end, runway N6 here is, is 48.63. And as I mentioned before, the topography here is, you know, generalized heading out. So, this is stationing, essentially showing that this is about to, to 5,000 feet away from, so remember, we have that 200-foot outward offset from the runway. So, so what that, what this line is showing for every, every 100, 100 horizontal feet, you have a five-foot rise in elevation. So, this is showing the, the bottom of that trapezoidal surface. So, then, and the trees here, for instance, show the, the penetrations into that surface area, which are subject to the clearing project.
So, on the left side?
Yep.
So, the top of, the tops of those trees that are depicted on the left, those would have to be cut and controlled at that, at that height? Okay. Now, I wanted to just address a couple of other points that were, were brought up. So, I think I know the answer to this because, based on the exchange you had with, with Mike, but what does it mean if I'm a property owner within the approach zone, the approach area? What does it mean for me?
It means that if you have a tree encroaching on the approach surface, which is illustrated by the red here, if you're live, if you live in there, then your tree will have to be either removed totally or cut down severely so that it does not grow back up and encroach into the approach surface.
And, and that would apply also to a structure that is intervening in that area as well?
Yes.
Are there many of those?
None.
And under the town meeting-endorsed bylaw changes and the votes, votes that we've taken, I guess, last May? You have the authority to go in and meet with the property owner and pay for that?
Mm-hmm.
The Airport Commission would pay for that with, from town money that had been appropriated?
Correct.
So, two other questions. With respect to the trees, Mr. Young projected that there could be as many as 10,000 trees affected. Does that sound right?
I'd like to comment on that.
Yeah.
He said 50 acres, and then he extrapolated that to 10,000 trees. I think if you consider those 50 acres totally populated by trees, that, that might be correct. But I did contact our consultant, well, in between, after I heard him, and the actual acreage for this project is five to six acres at most.
Of trees?
Of trees.
Can, can I, is, is that just at the runway six end, or is that both ends?
Total. I asked him, I asked him about total.
Do we know how many trees are involved?
No, they haven't been counted yet.
So, one thing I find a, a little bit confusing, and I don't know how you do this, was the map itself, the 58 map and the, and the, could you go to the one where you have the yellow and the red? Keep going.
One more. There you go.
Okay. So, the yellow is the expanded area, right? So, how will people know if they see this map this way? They're not gonna see it in color because we don't do the warrant in color. But presumably, it would be posted at town meeting on the screen if people want to see it. How will they know what, whether their houses are impacted, their properties are impacted or not, unless they have a street-by-street?
Because every homeowner that is, is impacted by this tree removal project, which is the outer line, has been contacted personally by me.
If they have a tree that's encroaching?
Yes.
But if they, if they, they're not in that circumstance, they just have a piece of property in there, or they haven't been contacted?
We, we could generate that list.
We could generate that list, yeah.
I think it's important for, and they may not be concerned about it unless they're intending to, excuse me, to plant a whole bunch of really tall trees or, or build, or build a structure that's going to encroach. But I think it's important that the town meeting voters have a list of all the streets that are impacted, or however you want to do it, by, by, by street number. But again, I, I, what's really critical is that people know what they're being asked to vote. Hold on.
Terry and I have been talking that one of the ways, what we're going to do is create an interactive map so that a property owner can go to the map, and if they're in that area, they can click on their property to see if they're affected.
Okay. That's a good idea.
Yeah.
And I, I see you're gonna have an open house, public information session.
And that was the perfect segue to party original question about, you know, some additional process here so that we're looking to have, we can, you know, answer these questions, spend more time, have both a public information session and an open house session where we could meet with individuals. And then there is a requirement, just like we needed to do last year when you added a, a paragraph, there is a requirement for a select board hearing that needs to happen in a minimum of 15 days before town meeting.
Before town meeting.
Town meeting, correct.
So, you'll be back here?
For, yes, for the select board will need to hold a public hearing.
So, it's even more critical that you get as much information out to everybody that's potentially affected, affected and potentially affected. That would be my request. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no further questions.
Mike?
Yeah, I, I just, to follow up on what Dean is asking, and I don't want to get too deep in the weeds here, but I, if, if this passes, one of the, the Chapter 90 requirements is that it be recorded in the Registry of Deeds. And so, it might be useful if you had a list of properties qua properties rather than, people may not want their personal, you know, their names out there in, in, in the world, but just as properties that are, that are affected, would be affected whether they have trees or they don't have trees.
Just the addresses.
Just, just, well, the, the, the parcel, exactly right.
Parcel numbers, yep.
I, I think that, that's a, a useful suggestion if that addresses your interest and concern. I think that's a useful suggestion, if that addresses your interest and concern.
Jeff?
Thank you, Corey. Yeah, I won't echo the very good questions that Mike and Dean opposed. I just would reaffirm the notion of being more transparent than not. So what I understand, my limited understanding, my pea brain here, if you will, the deep understanding that you folks have, is the reconciliation is just those, that yellow area on both ends is now reconciled to what we're doing today and where we need to be in terms of, in terms of the rules.
Yep.
Okay. And that anybody within that yellow area that needed to be informed, that they needed, we wanted to do something with their trees, have all been informed. And that did not expand, did not include any additional folks. I think that's critical. Okay. I'm good. Thanks.
That goes back almost two and a half years.
I live near there, so I really want to know. And I haven't been approached yet, and I think I'm well outside it. However, I think anybody inside it really would like to know. Notwithstanding the fact that we're going to, it looks like nearer the runways, we're going to be doing some pretty extensive tree work.
Yes, close into the runway, you saw those red splotches earlier.
And the bike trail is still there and?
Bike trail's still there.
South end, okay.
Vernal pool will be taken care of carefully.
Okay. All right. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
No, I mean, it's clearly, well, almost, it feels like anything involved with the airport gets a little bit more complicated for the precision point. I think it is critical, and I do appreciate the fact you're setting up an open house and information, you know, session prior to town meeting, because that will probably be extremely beneficial. But there's, I mean, there's questions, there's still questions. I'm getting a clearer picture of what is being presented, you know, going into this. I think there's a lot of questions and concerns that are out there, and I think there's going to be, continue to be asked, leading up to town meeting, for sure. So I guess from our perspective, I mean, we're looking to be, to place this, obviously. I'm not sure if we're in a position to make a recommendation yet, to be terribly transparent, because there's a lot of, you know, forthcoming information that may happen on this. So mechanically, I don't know what our thoughts are on this. Mike?
Yeah. First of all, I want to ask a question, then I, as part of that, I'll address what I think is, at least my answer to your question, Corey. But it's my understanding that the Airport Commission is currently both in front of the Conservation Commission here in Chatham.
Yep.
And has presented its entire program, at least with respect to the trees, at the runway six end of things, at both ends. Okay.
They're focusing on the Vernal Pool area. That's their major concern, basically both ends.
But there, they have, they will be giving you results, direction, whatever, before anything's done with respect to the trees.
Oh, absolutely.
That everybody, and they have also, if I understand it correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, referred the whole business to the Cape Cod Conservation Commission. Is that accurate?
That is correct. The Cape Cod Commission is looking into this, and we're hoping that they will come back with a, what they call a, either a minor modification or a major modification of the previous DRI.
Okay. DRI being?
Development of regional impact, under the Cape Cod Commission.
Development of regional impact.
So Corey, my answer is, the planes are flying. The approach that's being used is what's up there on the 24 map. Whether we approve it or not, that's going to continue. All we're doing, being asked to do here is say, this is the, this is the, this is the map. If there are obstructions in there, the FAA wants us to do something about it. What we do about it and how we do about it and the legal consequences of that are subject to all of these subsequent contingencies. But if we were to say, no, we don't want any part of that, we're going to just ignore it, nothing would change as far as the planes flying and the obstructions and all the rest of it. So I guess I'm comfortable with recommending. I may not persuade any of you to that effect, but that's my view of the world.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Further thoughts, questions?
No, I'm comfortable with that as well, to be honest with you. I would move to place.
Well, he made a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Second. Further discussion then. So we have a motion, we have a second. Further discussion.
Well, we only have one more week. I mean, we have to close the warrant next week, and we're either going to make, we're going to either, assuming we place it, we're going to either recommend it or not recommend it, unless we don't want to make any vote on, take any vote on a recommendation. I'm inclined to bite the bullet and do both at this time.
All right. So we have a motion, we have a second. Unless there's further discussion, we'll take a vote. Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Just be clear, we're voting to place.
To place.
Aye. On which item? Because we had two. Oh, I'm sorry. We already did the.
We already did the. We're on the Chapter 100 Airport Approach map, as we already did the scribbler's error.
Okay.
So this is the motion to place.
Yay.
Yay, yay, yay.
Aye.
An aye. Okay, so. Four, nothing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I will move to recommend.
I'll second.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor? Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
I'll say aye. All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right. Item number four, capital project and debt exclusion borrowing, transfer station, phase one, priority two, and a ballot question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rob Failey, Director of Public Works. So at the January 16th Select Board meeting, a follow-up agenda item was requested to discuss the additional appropriations for Phase One Recycling Area, Priority Two of the transfer station. Phase One design was reworked to explore cost reductions and efficiencies, and the construction estimate was also recalculated. So I've got a presentation here. So just to recap where we've been, so in Spring '23 Annual Town Meeting, approved 4.82 million for the construction of Phase One and Phase Two. We had another $215,000 left in the design contract. So that left $5,035,000 for the construction of the phased work. So Phase Two, as you know, went out to bid, was estimated at 2.1 million. The bids came in over the winter at $3,852,000 and 330, I'm sorry, J.J. Cardosi was the successful contractor. And we'd like to take another, out of the original appropriation, there's another $295,000 used for Phase Two Construction Administration, Owners Project Manager, Material Testing, et cetera, some minor ancillary things. So this is just a kind of a highlight of where Phase One and Phase Two are. Phase One is the recycling area. Again, it was estimated at 2.72 million. Bids came in over the winter at 3.172 million. It was not awarded, and this is where we are today, going back out to reconfigure what Phase One could look like. So we did, we'll go back to the design. We looked for some efficiencies. It's important to note, just before we went out to, we were at final design, basically, we were just trying to get some information. You can see in the green highlighted area, the circle, we found, we did some test pits. We found a very large stump dump in that area. So when trees were cut down and stumps removed, for probably decades, stumps were deposited there. So as part of the original contract, it was what kind of drove the cost up so high, was we had to remove all of those stumps, up to 15 feet in depth, and bring in suitable material that we can instruct over the top of. So when our redesign, we've kind of tried to minimize the impacts in that stump dump. So here is a revised layout, and I'll get to a side-by-side comparison. I think it's easier to see that way. Again, in this, this red circle this time, that's pretty much the approximate area of the stump dump. So it really gave us an opportunity to rework the design. We interviewed transfer station staff, looked at some efficiencies, tried, again, tried to minimize the impacts of the stump dump, looked at traffic flow, looked at different obstacles, different ways we can accommodate the public and still make it a very user-friendly site. We also would like to integrate part of Phase Three in this, and I'll explain that in a minute. So this is our side-by-side. So on the left is the as-bid designed, and to the right is the revised design. So you can see here, that's the swap shop that was in the stump dump area. We relocated it outside of the stump dump area. This area here was the difficult-to-manage waste. It had to be a solid surface where we can get a loader in there and scrape the surface. We eliminated that, and it's back up here where the original location is, as it stands today. What we were going to use that for was employee parking. So what we did is we put a small parking area over here to accommodate employee parking. You'll see in this area the number of compacters and containers used for recycling material. It's important to note that these first three containers were compacters for municipal solid waste. That meant all the town residents that would come through the doors in this design would come here and deposit their trash in these three compacters. That would, the original design eliminated residents going to the, what we call Phase Three, or the tipping floor. What we realized is, boy, in the middle of summer, we have as many as nine windows open at this tipping floor, and there's still a backup of traffic. What would it look like if we only had three municipal waste dumpsters in this area? We just feared that, that traffic impacts would be too great. And then we also looked at different things, like these three containers here are for glass. Did it make sense for somebody to drop their municipal waste? Maybe deposit their plastic, have to drive around, deposit their glass, and then their cardboard and paper? We just thought it was a much more efficient design. If we went with this phase, so we reduced our containers to, from 13 down to 10, but they're basically a mirror image of each other. Each side has glass, cardboard, plastic, mixed paper, things of that nature. That would allow us, if we did a kind of a mirror image of each other during the winter months, when it's slower traffic, we can close one side down entirely. And then residents come in. If the first area is busy, they can drive around and use the second area. They both offer the same level of service. But with this scenario, we would continue to use the tipping floor. The tipping floor, floor is concrete, it's poured concrete. The rebars have been exposed. There is a lot of rehab work that needs to be done, regardless of whether we continue to use it for municipal solid waste, commercial waste. That's a source of, you know, there's a lot of, when the rebar pops, there's a lot of crevices in that. It holds moisture. There's a lot of odor issues. We do, our staff does their best job to try to clean that and power wash it every week. But there's just so many crevices that liquid stays in there, and it's really a source of odors. So we're trying to eliminate that. If we repour that concrete floor, which we're calling Phase Three, it would eliminate any future Phase Three work. I think Phase Three was estimated at slightly over $1 million at some point a few years ago. It had compacters and things of that nature in there. We can reduce that quite a bit. So I'll pause here, Mr. Chair, if there are any questions.
Questions or comments? Dean?
What are those items on the right, in that, within the red, the ovals and the?
These, those are like mulch and debris and things of that nature. People bring in woody vegetation and things like that. Those are just piles. So that could stay on top of the stump dump. It's not like an area where we're going to pave or pour concrete. If there is a, if a stump does degrade over time and it creates a small sinkhole or something, we just fill it in and let it decay naturally.
I had a question about your earlier slide on Phase Two, if I could just ask two quick questions. So J.J. Cardosi, have they been, they've been awarded the contract?
They've been awarded, well, they've given a notice to proceed. We're waiting on the award letter from the consultant.
Where are they from?
They're from Massachusetts, just off Cape.
Okay. And that would be in the amount of $3.8 million, which was the bid?
That was, that was their bid with the filed subbidders as well.
So where does that 200 and? You said you wanted to apply $295,000 for administration and OPM. Where is that coming out of?
That's coming out of the original appropriation. Five million.
Okay. And that's all squared away in terms of the appropriation, because we got some additional money last fall.
Correct. We still have a little bit of capacity in that original appropriation.
And finally, on that same phase, who's the OPM? Has that been selected yet?
It'll be, Terry left, Rick Pomeroy. Sorry.
Okay.
I couldn't think of his name for a minute.
Okay. Those are my questions at the moment.
Thank you. Mike?
Just a quick, does the, when you do the tipping floor, does that have to come out entirely? Or can you pour over it?
We can, we'll have to kind of jackhammer, get below that first mat of rebar, put new rebar in, and then pour on top of that. So it is a pretty extensive project.
Essentially, you got to take it out.
But the majority of it can stay there. I'm not sure of the thickness of it, but yeah.
Enough so you get a bond?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'll just go through some of the, some of the numbers here. So the previous low bid for the recycling area for Phase One was 3.172 million. The new estimate for Phase One is 3.1 million. I know that doesn't sound like a savings. It is. I think part of what the consultant learned as part of this is they were a little bit more conservative with their cost estimating. And then if we add the Phase Three tipping floor, it's approximately another 305,000. So that brings the new total to 3.405 million. I'd like to add a 10% contingency, just because if we get this approved and get support of the Select Board, we don't want to come back and ask for any more money. I think we leave some on the table, but at this point, we want to make sure we cover all of our expenses. So the new, the new completed three phases of the transfer station would be 3.745 million, minus the remaining funds left over from the original 2023 appropriation. And so that would leave us with a need of 2.9 million to complete the transfer station.
Jeff?
Thanks, Corey. Okay, Rob, I'm confused with the numbers. Apologize. But we had 5,350,000 left from Phase Two. So we have 5,350,000 in the funding.
Original was 5,350,000.
5,350,000. And then if we allocate what we believe we're going to spend for, the approved Phase Two was 3,852,000. So that leaves us 1,183,000.
Plus, plus the 295,000.
So less the 295,000. If I have 1,183,000 remaining, I have to subtract another 295,000.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks. And then that, those are monies that can go to Phase Two and Three?
Correct.
Or One and Three?
Correct. That's the 887,000.
That's 888,000. Gotcha.
But we did build in a contingency as well.
So, okay. So the net amount that you're looking for, this is additional funds to finish the project at the transfer station, is 2.9 million?
Correct.
Plus the 5 million we've already allocated?
Correct. And that, but that completes all three phases and not just One and Two.
Okay. And what was our original bid on the all three phases? It was 4.9, I think we allocated, or, yeah, 4.9.
The estimate, yes, was 4.8.
Well, that was just for Phase One and Phase Two, though. It didn't include Phase Three.
Right. I'm just trying to get a handle on the overall ask here, you know. And you're asking us to approve this this evening? This, the additional fund, asking town meeting for additional funds of 2.9 million, is that what we're asking?
Correct.
Yes.
Thanks.
And the Phase Three part of it is 305,000 for the tipping floor improvements.
Yep. Thanks. I mean, I like the design. I think it makes a lot of sense. There's a certain logic to what you lined up, Rob. I like your approach. You could have asked us if there was a stump dump there, because we know. All right, anyway, I'll be quiet.
Dean?
Was the design firm that revises the same firm that did the original?
Yes, Western Sampson is the.
Okay. Because I don't remember ever hearing about a Phase Three. I heard Phase One and Phase Two. Was there a Phase Three before?
The Phase Three was, well, it came about as for the tipping floor. We had originally talked about that for where the, the, the commercial haulers would use, the blue building per se. And then when, and then the residential area would use the compactors. Now, going back to the blue building, I think it's the same status quo of the use, it's just the improvement to the floor.
So, is it intended that, when you put in the additional compact, the 10 compactors, is the general public, are they, are they gonna use the, the tipping floor or just the haulers?
The haulers and the public would still use the tipping.
So, they could use both?
Correct.
So, would that, they would put their general trash in the tipping floor?
Yes, and we would not have the municipal solid waste compactors with the recycling. They would be separate.
Now, were you, was this before the Finance Committee today?
Thursday will go in front of them.
Okay. I was wondering if they had taken any position. Not yet. Okay. Thank you.
Mike.
Just, this is really a technical question. The, the, the new subtotal, where you say three phases, we're really talking about a subtotal for Phase One and Phase Three, aren't we?
That's correct.
I mean, three, I, I, I'm just stumbling over, what's the third phase of the three phases?
Well, Phase Two was already awarded, and that's.
I understand, but it's not in the 3745.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Good.
Couple of questions. So, we've kind of gone back to using the, the tipping floor for some of the solid waste?
That's correct. That's, that's the biggest change here.
Biggest change. Driving factor, probably contaminated loads, or, I mean, is there any?
A lot of it has to do with, if, you know, the original design had compactors in the tipping floor building. It was a safety concern. There are a lot of things that should not be placed in the trash that are. By moving it around with a loader, it gives our employees a chance to observe what's there and have fewer rejected loads at CMAS. If there is like an air conditioner or something that gets placed in the trash in a compactor, our employees have to go and retrieve it.
Okay. OSHA would not like that very much. Also, with our, I guess our assets on, on property now, we have some, we have three trailers in the back that are being, that are currently, they, are they being used? Or they plan to be, continue to be used?
They are being used daily. That's where our contractor brings loads of municipal solid waste to Covanta, to CMAS, almost on a daily basis.
So, we get the two new ones, and then we have three in the back?
The, the three old ones?
Yes.
Okay. So, those, we'd like to put to auction.
Okay.
They're not, they're not being used.
They're not being used. So, we can, we can part ways with those.
Yes.
Okay. No, I don't have any questions at the, okay? All right. Would anyone entertain a motion?
I will move, we're moving to place, yes.
Move to place, correct.
Move to place.
Do I hear a second? I'll sec, I'll second that. Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Who want a motion to recommend?
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest, at least for me, I'd like to hear what the Finance Committee has to say before we take a position on this. We'll know, we'll know if they're meeting Thursday of this week. We'll know next Tuesday when we close the war. That's my.
We can wait. I'm, I've been very supportive of the transfer station for a very long time. I don't think it's gonna change my position this week or next week, but I'll defer to the board.
It's a lot of money. We, we initially projected or estimated 49. It's a $7 million project now. 3852 plus 295 is 41, and then another 28 or 29, if you will, for Phases One and Three, is 7, 7 million bucks. So, what's the appetite for a $7 million investment? It's not all at once. We're gonna, this has become out of debt, I would assume. We're gonna, we're gonna bond this. You're gonna need to go to the ballot box. Needs two-thirds. The thing that sways me to vote in favor of its recommendation is the fact it's so sorely needed. Now, Phase Two desperately needed. Phase One and Three, can, can we live without Phase One and Three? Well, I guess we'll, we'll, we'll let the town decide that. But I, I'll, I'll recommend it. Sorely needed, sorely needed. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I, by the way, I think, I was thinking eight, but it's seven and a half. It's a lot of money. It's a lot more money than we thought we were gonna spend. It's needed. I think we need to recognize that in our willingness to spend this kind of money on this project, we, we need to have that in mind as a perspective on some of the other things that the town, particularly town residents, need. But having said all of that, and I appreciate what you're saying, Dean, but, you know, if, if they recommend it, that doesn't make me any more for it. And if they recommend against it, I'm still gonna vote for it, and I'm gonna do it sort of in the teeth of that. And I, you know, I, I think that's, we have an independent responsibility to make a judgment. So, I'm gonna go along with Jeff and, and say I, I'll second the recommendation.
All right. So, we have a motion. We have a second. Would you like me to change order?
No, I'm happy, you know, I, I appreciate what's been said, so I'll, are you asking for the vote?
We have a motion. We have a second. Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item five, Chatham Community Preservation Act, Community Preservation Bylaw Amendment. This was brought to us Debbie Aikman.
Thank you. I'm Gary Tennyson, Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee. Our long-term member, Debbie Aikman, was scheduled to present this recommended bylaw amendment, but she's not able to be here tonight, so, so I'll do that. Do we have something that we can, that was distributed to you, or that we can put on the?
We have.
We have a staff memo and a bunch of history of emails and legal opinions and back and forth. Let me distribute this. Thank you.
So, relatively speaking, this is a very simple bylaw amendment that we're recommending that deals with the appointment of the members of the Community Preservation Committee. And the committee is requesting that the Select Board sponsor this amendment as a CPA, to the CPA bylaw. So, the section that designates the members of the CPA is now out of date. So, the first change that we're recommending is that the housing, the Affordable Housing Committee, which is in the bylaw, designating one of the members, that, that's, committee's name has been changed to the Chatham Community Housing Partnership. So, we're suggesting that the bylaw replace, as you can see in the middle of the recommendation, the Affordable Housing Committee with the Chatham Community Housing Partnership. Once we do that, however, we should also change the last sentence in this section or in this paragraph to include partnership. But we also noticed that one of our other members, who was appointed by the Housing Authority, is not mentioned in that last sentence either. And so, we're suggesting that we, in addition to commissions, boards, and committees, we add partnership and authority as the groups that make the nomination of the committees, of the members of our committee. We're also suggesting that we delete a section of that last sentence that says in quotes, let me find it, that, or for whatever reason, fall to, fail to recommend an individual to the committee. And we're suggesting that because, first of all, the CPA Act requires that the committees recommend a member to the CPC committee. And secondly, we've had some experience with committees not living up to that responsibility. And so, we're concerned that this might give the impression that there is an option for them not to make that recommendation, that type of a recommendation. So, we're suggesting that we delete that wording, and that we also try to be a little bit more emphatic that they should make that nomination by changing the word "will" to "shell" at the end of that sentence. So, those basically are the, the recommendations that we're making for an amended bylaw.
Thank you very much. Questions? Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, I will, I will support this. Ms. Eggman, Ms. Eggman and myself, Aikman and myself have corresponded about this. She's been interested in this bylaw for a long time. The only substantive change is the one at the very end, where it does remove some authority from the Select Board. But I think it's rather trivial in circumstance, so I can certainly live with that. And I guess that's all I really wanted to say. This is basically a housekeeping bylaw largely, so I would support it.
Jeff.
Yeah, I'll support it as well. I, I do have a minor disagreement with Mr. Castro. I don't believe it erodes the power of the Select Board at all. In fact, if committees are under, are, which are represented under the section no longer be in existence, we would then be allowed to appoint a person of our own choosing. So, if I'm reading it correctly, I don't think that erodes our, our purview or our appointing authority. Thanks. And I'm gonna support this as well.
If I could respond?
Sure.
And I, I'm gonna support it as is. But in, I think in the current, in the current reading, if they fail to recommend an appointment, then the board can go, this board can go ahead and appoint somebody. But if you strike that language, if they fail to recommend somebody, we don't make that appointment. We have to really get after the committee to say, hey, you're delinquent. You gotta make an appointment. And, and if they're, if they're resistant, I suppose we could, we could remove them all and appoint new people. But I think that's what it is. It's a, it's a minor thing, I think.
I'm not a lawyer, but I'm not sure if I read that correctly.
Well, before we get to that issue, speaking of lawyers, and we probably lost them, but there is attached here, well, there's a, there's a memo here for, or an email from, from Pat Costello dated February 28th of this year. And the concluding sentence of that, or paragraph, says accordingly, "I believe the attached proposed amendments, amendment to General Bylaw Section 10-4 would conflict and be inconsistent with Section 32(c) of the Charter unless said Charter provision and Bylaw Section 10-4 were also amended to delegate the CPC appointing authority to other town boards, commissions, and agencies."
I, I, can I respond on that?
Well, you can respond. I, I, I mean.
I think he was talking about.
Is he talking about?
He's not talking about, he's not talking about this version. He's talking about an earlier.
Earlier version.
Proposal that. Then, as I read this version, basically, and, and that last sentence that you gentlemen are discussing makes it pretty plain that it is intended that those recommendations are binding.
Well, we have Town Council on. He can comment on this. He was talking about an earlier version which had.
Let me just say, I have no objection to this. I, I wonder why it is so necessary, but I, I'm prepared to go along with it so long as it doesn't conflict with the Charter. And I would also point out that, that I did go back and look to see, I don't know whether it was this, although it, a strong suspicion that it was, there was an amendment to the Charter Provision 3.2(c) on the table in the last Charter Review Commission, of which I was a member. And the, the committee, the, the commission, the committee, sorry, Charter Review Committee, decided that it was whatever, we, we, we eliminated. So, that's, those are my contributions.
Well, we should ask, for nine years, I've resisted every attempt to derogate from our authority. And I was, I'm willing to surrender on this, the last one, if Town Council has no legal problem with it. What he was talking about in those earlier opinions, and I had never seen the second opinion until the packet, from, but he was talking about a sentence that is in the current bylaw which preserves the, the protocol of the subordinate committees making recommendations rather than designations to us. That's what he was talking about then. But it would, I would like to ask Pat Costello what he thinks about the elimination of the sentence, of the clause of in the, in the last sentence.
Pat, we're gonna call on you, please.
Good evening once again, gentlemen. This is the first time I have seen this version, this, call it a compromised version or what have you, of the bylaw amendment. Dean is correct. The, all of the emails that I had previously rendered, the opinions I rendered, related to a different proposed amendment that in substance undermined, in my view, are derogated from the Charter provisions that designated the Select Board as the appointing authority. This proposed amendment does not do that. And to that extent, I'm fine with it. I do think it is legally appropriate. As to the deletion of that last clause, I don't think it's in any way harmful or creates any legal issue. What I do think it does, though, is just create some level of ambiguity as to what would happen if a committee or a board did fail to make a recommendation. The language as it presently exists expressly states that in that circumstance, the Select Board will appoint a person of its choosing. That is the default position, in my view, in any event. That's what would happen. So, I tend to concur with, with Dean's view that it's not terribly significant. But it does, as it is currently drafted, it does promote more specificity as to procedure.
Mike.
So, Pat, two questions. One, do, do, so, do you, I mean, do you interpret this as consistent with 3.2(c)?
Yes, this particular version that I just saw.
And then my second question is, what happens if, under this bylaw, if the Select Board, in the teeth of a recommendation of a particular person from a particular committee, decides to appoint somebody else?
I believe that's the Select Board's prerogative. A recommendation is a recommendation. It's not binding on the board.
So, the entire, your, your entire position here rests on the fact that there's a, that it's a recommendation and not a command or designation or whatever?
That's correct. The Select Board is.
The Select Board retains its authority to make its own decision, notwithstanding any recommendation?
That's my opinion, yes.
Okay.
Dean.
Mike's questions inspired me to ask this question, because I've always taken the position, I'll ask Pat Costello this. If a committee recommends somebody that we don't like, and we, we reject the recommendation, we vote it down, we can say to them, come up with somebody else under the existing bylaw, and we would be able still to do that under this proposed bylaw?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Jeff.
Move to place.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye.
Would recommend.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens, sorry, and Select Board Member Metter?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Move on to the, to the CPA items?
Yes, please.
Okay. So this year, the CPC received nine applications for CPA funding. We reviewed them all and are recommending that seven be moved forward to the town meeting. Those seven would have a total of $1,531,000. We're also recommending that $15,000 be approved to cover our administrative expenses. And we will, and I'll explain this more in one of the warrants, but we're recommending that $160,000 be placed in the open space reserve and it'll stay in the open, open space reserve. This year, we received less new revenue than we have in the past few years. We received from the tax surcharge and from the state, a total of $1,355,000. So about $350,000 less than what we would be recommending to be committed. And so we would take that out of our undesignated reserve. So I'll move on to the, the first article. And that's the one that would provide $15,000 to cover the administrative costs of the CPC operations. That's mainly for clerical support, sometimes legal, sometimes surveying, things like that. Usually, we don't use all of that. We use about half of it. What remains reverts into the undesignated reserve. So we recommend that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I'll move to place.
Do I hear a second?
I, I don't mind, Mr. Chairman, if I might, I don't mind Gary going through them and then voting as a consent and pulling out the ones we might have issues with, rather. And just, just move it along because I.
Or asking any questions.
Or ask questions. I'm, I'm, I'm good with every single.
I'm perfectly fine with that.
I think they did a really good job.
All right.
They did a really good job.
Let you go right down.
Okay, I'll do that. So the next article is, where is it on the list?
Administrative budget.
It's the bottom. It's the, on your list, the, the matching funds for the required 10% that has to go into open space, the community housing and historic preservation. And as I think you know, what we do each year is put a little more than 10% into the reserves of each of those three categories and then draw on those reserves for subsequent warrant articles. So we put 160 into those three areas. And in the case of historic preservation and community housing, we, we will use those funds for future warrant items. However, this year, we received no applications in the open space category. And therefore, the 160 that goes into open space will remain in open space. Where, I might add, we already have about $800,000 in reserves. So we'll wind up with about, close to a million dollars in open space reserves. So we need to work on getting more applications in that category. The next article is our largest one. We're recommending $750,000 for the Chatham Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I think this is familiar to all of you. The CPA has been the primary source of support for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Previous allocations that have gone to the fund have been used to purchase the Buckley property, the property at Meeting House Road. As I understand it, there, the fund is putting out a new RFP for additional properties that might be purchased by the town for affordable housing. And this $750,000 will help them to be able to move quickly to acquire those properties if they should become available. I might also add that the request we received was for $500,000 and the committee felt this was sufficiently important that we decided to actually draw from the reserves and recommend $750,000. The next article recommends $20,000 over two years as a contribution to the Lower Cape Housing Institute. That's an institute based in Orleans that provides services to all of the towns in the Lower Cape. It provides training for staff dealing with housing issues. It provides advice. And then it tries to coordinate the efforts for affordable housing across all of the towns in the, in the Lower Cape. We have two representatives on our committee from the, from, one from the Housing Authority and one from the partnership. And we asked them whether we get a good return on our investment and they assured us that we do. So we're recommending that, that article. The next article is another affordable housing project. It's, it's recommending $75,000 toward the cost of constructing a group home that's located in Dennis and that will provide highly affordable residences for individuals with profound autism or other developmental disabilities. It's a $48 million, I mean, excuse me, it's a $4.8 million construction project sponsored by a Cape-wide non-governmental organization called Friends or Relatives with Autism or Related Disabilities, or FORWARD for short. So the project is called Forward at the Rock Phase Two. It will add eight additional one-bedroom apartments to Phase One, which also had eight one-bedroom apartments and is now fully occupied. Funding for the support services of this project are provided by the Massachusetts Department of Developmental Disabilities through a contract to capabilities. It is this state agency that selects the residents from their Cape Cod list of clients, that, the people that will move into this facility. All the residents will have incomes below the 30% AMI and many of them will actually be at risk of becoming homeless. Dennis is providing the land and $750,000 toward the project. And seven other Cape towns have already recommended CPA funding for the project and they're seeking additional funding from basically all the rest of the towns, including Chatham. The remainder of the funds will come from the county and the state. I might add that Chatham provided $50,000 toward Phase One and that the organization FORWARD completed the project on time and on budget. I visited Phase One and it's a beautifully, beautiful and highly functional facility and is doing an excellent job of serving the clients that they have there. The next article is another affordable housing project called Spring Rock Village, located in Brewster. And this request is for $100,000 and it comes to us from the, from the Housing Assistance Corporation and from Preservation for Affordable Housing. These are the two nonprofit developers who build affordable housing and responded to the RFP that was put out by Brewster to develop this affordable housing project on Millstone Road called Spring Rock Village. This is a $28 million construction project that will provide 45 family rental units with affordability ranging from 30% AMI to 80% AMI. All necessary permits have been obtained and the developers are now in the funding phase. Brewster has provided the property and $1 million toward the project. The developers are now seeking $100,000 from each of six neighboring towns, including Chatham. These relatively modest local and regional funding commitments are important to the developers as they seek state and federal funding that will cover roughly 95% of the total cost. Brewster has applied to the state for both a local preference of 75%, I mean of 55%, excuse me, and a regional preference of 15%. This project will benefit Chatham, first of all, by providing nearby affordable housing for people working in Chatham. In addition, Chatham residents, people working in Chatham, and those who have a job offer in Chatham will be eligible for, eligible for both the regional preference as well as the open lottery, which together cover 45% of the units. Furthermore, it's the feeling of the committee that affordable housing really does need to be dealt with on a regional basis and this is a commitment toward that objective. The next article seeks approval of $350,000 toward the renovation of the historic Coast Guard boathouse that will become the upweller and is located on Bridge Street. Again, I think most of you are familiar with this. Last year, we received a request for $700,000 for this historic renovation project. At that time, the boathouse was still in Quincy, I guess it is still in Quincy, but they still needed permits and no construction had been initiated. So we felt it was a little premature to commit, as much as they were asking. We agreed to commit half of that, $350,000, and said we would reconsider the remainder once all permits were obtained and the project was initiated. That's the state now. The permits have been obtained and they've started the dredging and the building of the bulkhead. And so we're recommending that the remaining $350,000 be approved. The, the next article requests, is a request for $100,000 that comes from the Monomoy High School All-Sports Booster Club. And what they're seeking funding for is the construction of a press box. It's a fancy press box that will, it'll be ADA compliant and it will serve a number of functions during graduation, during other ceremonies that are there, and for all of the sporting events. They've also requested and received approval from the Harwich CPC, which will be recommending $100,000 at their town meeting as well. The club itself has already raised over $30,000 for the project and feels confident, if there's any increase in the funding required, that they'll be able to raise that as well. And then the last article would provide $136,786 to rehabilitate the Little League baseball field at the Chatham Community Center. It will, funds will be used to upgrade the fencing, the bleachers, the team benches, the storage shed, and the infield. Those of us in the committee visited the field. It's a very prominent location within Chatham. And we certainly agreed that it needs, needed some rehabilitation and so we're recommending support for that as well. I think that's it.
Thank you very much for the rundown. One thing I'm just going to point out before I forget about is that very last article you mentioned, just to add the word field to the title of the article, minor edit, but probably somewhat important. So, Jeff?
Just a general comment and I'll, I'll make a motion to place as well. But I just thought that CPC did an excellent job this year, thoughtful approach. Your write-ups were excellent. I like the fact you spread it around with affordable housing as, as is your, your charge, but with an emphasis on affordable housing and an emphasis on recreation as well as being our young people. So I thought you guys did a great job. So I'll move to place.
Thank you.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
That's to place all of them.
Okay, motion, second, further discussion? All right, all those in favor, Select Board Member DeCastro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metters says aye.
There's a motion to recommend, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, Select Board Member DeCastro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metters says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that wraps up our regular agenda tonight. I will entertain one last motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, Select Board Member DeCastro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metters says aye. Good night, everyone. Thank you for watching.